Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the March 24, 2015 Regularity and Two School Board Trustee Meeting. Thank you all for your usual patience as we were in executive session addressing some very critical issues. Thank you for your presence tonight as well. Look, I'm so happy to see so many of you out on tonight. At this time, we will stand and have an inspirational moment by Honorable Amelia Mackey, and she will also lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Mackey.
As I think about the part that every one of us plays in this room in a child's life, from a policymaking perspective to administration, to hands-on teachers, to parents, to supporters, I'm reminded of the impact that we have on children. And I snatched a little something off my own wall from one of my own children's room, and it's something that some of us have probably heard before. Children learn what they live. Just a reminder, if a child lives with criticism, he learns to condemn. If a child lives with hostility, he learns to fight. If a child lives with ridicule, he learns to feel shy, insecure. If a child lives with shame, he learns to feel guilty. If a child lives with tolerance, he learns to be patient. If a child lives with encouragement, he learns confidence. If a child lives with praise, he learns to appreciate. If a child lives with fairness, he learns justice. If a child lives with security, he learns to have faith. If a child lives with approval, he learns to like himself. If a child lives with acceptance and friendship, he learns to find love in this world. Let us recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
May be seated. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the approval of the current agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Brill, second by Mr. Manning. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Ms. Mackey.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Plank. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is a special recognition. Dr. Hamm.
Yes, Libby Ruff will be making the introductions of our recipients of special recognitions this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Hamm, students, parents, staff, and members of our community. Tonight, we really are in the presence of greatness. I think you will be amazed. We always have wonderful honors. Tonight, I think we really have the cream of the crop. Dr. Cheryl Caution-Parker is going to help hand out certificates, and we're going to begin with our student achievement. Would Anna Price from Richland Northeast High School please come forward along with her principal Sabrina Suber? And we'd like to ask Ms. Rosalyn Glenn, a financial advisor with Prudential, to join them up front as well. A life-threatening illness and a desire to help others have resulted in Anna being awarded the Prudential Spirit of Community Award for the state of South Carolina, one of two awards given. As a survivor of brain cancer, Anna spent the last several years returning the kindness shown to her while undergoing chemotherapy. She has helped serve kids with cancer by raising money for the Palmetto's Children's Hospital, leading toy drives for hospitalized children, and coordinating a dance marathon that raised more than $2,000. Ms. Glenn is here tonight, representing Prudential, sponsor for the award, to present Anna with an engraved silver medallion. In addition, Anna will receive $1,000 and an all-expense-paid trip in early May to Washington, DC for four days of national recognition. During the trip, ten honorees will be named America's Top Youth Volunteers of 2015. Anna, you are our top volunteer. We wish you well in the national competition, but you've already won it for us. Congratulations. Ms. Suber is going to stay up front, and we're going to invite the Richland Northeast Model United Nations team to come forward along with their advisors Lynn Washington, Samantha Rainwater, and Marquise Ardewan. Twenty-six years, that's it. Twenty-six years, that's how many times this team has swept the national competition. In fact, I've heard that there's a team in another state that has tried and tried to beat them. They can't do it. They beat 150 teams this year, representing 20 countries, to win the award of distinction. We're going to ask the team members to now introduce themselves. Shelley's going to hand you a microphone.
Hi, Kevin Odell, and I'm the president of the team.
Casey Collins, I'm one of next year's resource officers.
Kaylee Medlin, vice president.
Marquise Ardewan, faculty advisor.
Samantha Rainwater, faculty advisor.
Lynn Washington, faculty advisor.
Hi, and Sabrina Suber, principal.
In addition to learning about preparing, when they prepare for the competition and actually competed it, they get experience in the theory and practice of international relations firsthand. What it does, it prepares them to be leaders, our future leaders, and we can all feel confident that we are in good hands. We also want to mention that Lynn Washington has led the team for 33 years, and she has put Richland Northeast and Richland Two on the international map. She says this is her last year for leading Model UN. So we want to give, on behalf of Richland Two, we want to give you a special thanks for your commitment to excellence and to preparing years and countless numbers of student future leaders. Thank you, and congratulations to all of them. Also, as you see, those were just a sampling. All the team members are listed on the slide screen. Not all of them could be with us tonight. Next, we'll call up Kathy Van Doe, who's an eighth grader from E.L. Wright Middle School, and her principal, Mary Paige Wiley. Kathy Van is an amazing artist, so much so that she won the state's Lions Club Peace Poster Contest. The theme this year was peace, love, and understanding. And if you'll turn your attention to the slide screen, you'll see her beautiful piece of artwork.
Did you say it was Kathy Van Gogh?
Very good, Mr. Tice.
Very good artwork.
Kathy won her school competition, then went on to win the district award, and then was voted best in South Carolina. And each of those levels came with a cash prize. She'll be honored at the Myrtle, the state convention this weekend. Kathy Van, thank you so much for doing this great artwork. We appreciate you representing us so well. Congratulations. And she's joined by her mother as well. Talk about talent. The next group of award winners has plenty of athletic ability and school spirit, and I really enjoyed following them. I wasn't at the game, but I followed you on Twitter. The Spring Valley Lady Vikings Basketball Team, please come forward along with your coaches, Ann Long, Doritah Garland, Teresa Leggett, and Principal Jeff Timoney. In case you didn't know, they won the Class Four A Girls Basketball State Championship, defeating Goose Creek at the Colonial Life Arena. The win gave Coach Ann Long her seventh state title, including three at Spring Valley. They finished the season with a 25-4 record and were undefeated in their Region Four A play. We're going to let the team members now introduce themselves. Shelley's going to hand you the microphone.
Teresa Leggett, an assistant coach.
Coach Ann Long, head coach.
Princess Hale, videographer.
Christian Wall.
Dominique Hill.
Christian Hythe.
Brittany Joyner.
Anasia Matthews.
Megan Davis.
Akeia Dumapp.
Shantae Taylor.
Joy Jones.
Doritah Garland, second grade teacher at Langford, assistant coach.
Congratulations, ladies, on your greatness. Hold on just a second. And Akeia, Coach Long, and Akeia, and Principal Timoney, I'm going to get y'all to stay up here, if you don't mind, because we have another round of basketball awards we're going to recognize. So Coach Long, will you stay up with Akeia? We had multiple players selected for the top basketball honors to play in All-Star Games, and Akeia was selected from Spring Valley. Malik was invited to participate in the Carolinas All-Star Basketball Classic, which is the premier high school senior basketball tournament for the North and South Carolina. So All-Stars from South Carolina compete against All-Stars from North Carolina, and that takes place on March 28. Our other All-Star players that we're going to ask to join is forward Dexter Foster from Ridgeview and his coach John Combs, and Principal Dr. Brenda McFotsworth, and senior point guard Breland Blanding and Coach Terrence Gibson, also from Ridgeview. Y'all stay up there. We'll get one big group photo, too, of all our All-Stars. So Akeia, Dexter, and Breland played in the state All-Star Game, which was the North versus the South team, and they competed this past weekend at Lexington High School. So as you can see, we were well represented in our All-Star Games for basketball. Congratulations. Our next honoree is becoming a regular at these board meetings. Andrew Plant from Westwood High School, please come forward with your principal Ralph Schmidt and your coach Rodney Summers. Last year, Andrew was the 2014 Strength Champion in the 190-pound division. That's important, because in order to be named the South Carolina Strength Athlete of the Year, you must be a weight class winner the year before. So this is the only award that I've ever heard of where you have to, it goes on for two years. So he won his weight class last year, and now he is one of three Strength Athletes of the Year for South Carolina. And we also just found out, like just tonight, that Andrew won the state championship again this year at the state strength meet. So in addition to his athletic ability, he's also an exceptional student. The district also receives honors oftentimes for taking care of our competition stadiums. Many of our athletes and us who go to the games take it for granted that there will be a nice-looking field there, to be in top shape to perform on. But that takes a lot of work and care, and I'd like to ask the district stadium and turf manager Billy Potowski, who is accompanied by the turf management group from the district, Stan Ford, Larry Medlin, Mike Weber, and Ronald Howard. These men oversee 42 sports fields in the district. This excellent crew has been notified that not one, but two of their stadiums won Fields of Excellence Awards for pioneer athletics. They won the awards for the paint job that these gentlemen did for state playoff games. So when one of our teams makes it to, the football teams makes it to the state playoffs, these men go in and do an outstanding job to paint the field if we're the home team, and they received two awards for that work. Only 71 fields from around the country were selected, and two of them are from Richland Two. Thank you for exemplifying teamwork, hard work, and excellence. Westwood High School, Westwood High School English teacher Stacy Plotner, please come forward, and we'll ask Principal Ralph Schmidt to come back up front with her. Ms. Plotner has received the Frederick Douglass Human Rights Award for 2015. The Frederick Douglass Human Rights Award has honored some of our nation's most celebrated defenders of human rights, many of whom have shed light on some of the most horrendous abuses in our criminal justice system. For Ms. Plotner, the cause is human trafficking, and she started the investigation into modern-day slavery with her English class last year. This year, she headed the school-wide project known as Globalize 13, and Westwood was one of three schools nationwide selected to participate in this program. And I have to say, I went to the event, and I'm not sure I had heard a lot about modern-day slavery until I went there, and I really and truly believe that the conversations happening in Columbia, South Carolina right now can really be partly attributed to the work of you and your students. So congratulations on your work, and congratulations on this. The Blythewood High School School Improvement Council won the state's highest honor, and we'd like to call forward Principal Brenda Hafner, excuse me, and SIC Chair Clarissa Bennett. The Blythewood High SIC has been awarded the 2015 Dick and Tunkey Riley Award for School Improvement Council Excellence. The Blythewood SIC, along with administrators and teachers, implemented a strategic plan to prioritize SAT and ACT preparation, individualized guidance, and improved career planning. They came up with a variety of initiatives, including specialized software that prepares students for college and career, and the hard work paid off. As a result of the collaborative work, the school saw big increases in the graduation rate, college acceptance rate, and scholarship money rewarded. Our own board member Amelia Mackey is on the state board for the SIC, and she, I believe, along with Mr. Jackson and Dr. Hamm, were there to see them win the award. North Springs, excuse me, North Springs Elementary School has received a national award, so we'll ask Principal David Holcendorf and STEM's lead teacher Dr. Sally Kato, please come forward. North Springs won the 2015 National Association for Professional Development Schools Award for exemplary professional development school achievement. The award recognizes the relationship between North Springs and the University of South Carolina for creating and sustaining genuine collaborative partnerships between K-12 and higher education. Student teachers who intern at North Springs spend one semester in a regular classroom and one semester in a STEM's classroom, so they can learn multiple ways of engaging students. North Springs has also been successful in providing mentoring to interns in developing lesson plans, creating resumes, and interviewing. North Springs was the first K-12 school to receive the award in 2000, and this year marks North Springs, makes North Springs the first school to be honored with the award twice. Last, but certainly not least, we call up Terry Butts. Terry received one of public education's most prestigious honors, and with her tonight, I believe, is Child Development Lead Teacher Debbie Brady. I'm just so, still so excited. I just want to talk about it so much. No, please come forward. As you can tell, we are all still beaming with joy and are so proud of Terry. Terry was bestowed with the highest teaching honor from the National Education Association Foundation in the country. We are extremely proud that she was named the 2015 winner of the National Education Association Foundation Member Benefits Award for Teaching Excellence, which carries a $25,000 prize and a professional development trip to Peru. Is that right? Terry's commitment to excellence in education, her professionalism, and her enthusiasm in her work, along with her passion for her craft and developing excellence in others, makes her a superstar educator. And I will just make one comment. I watched it along with everybody, a lot of people streaming live, and I think the thing that hit me most was when Terry thanked her children, and it showed the heart that she has for her own students, because she said, "I thank my two kids for letting me be a mom to all my students for these many years, and as a mother, as a daughter of a teacher, I know what that means." Terry, thank you so much, and congratulations. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is our student focus. Dr. Hamm.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask Nancy Gregory to make the introduction of the
Good evening. Tonight, we have the pleasure of having Jessica Skinner as the Teacher of the Year for Lake Carolina Upper, and she has a group of students with her tonight to talk about one of the projects they've had ongoing on this campus to teach empathy to students, and it's very exciting, and I'm going to turn it over to Jessica.
Welcome to Lake Carolina Elementary's upper campus. I am Megan Pasala. My fourth-grade friends and I want to share with you about a school-wide event that taught every gator at LCEU about disabilities. My friends are Sarah Speed, Tarun Ramkumar, Madison Bright, Elliot Rury, Joey Murray, Jiren Dorch, and Gwen Jennings. During the disability awareness event, parents volunteered to run stations with activities that simulated various types of disabilities. Every student got the chance to rotate through stations and experience different types of disabilities. One type of station at the event simulated visual disabilities. I was blindfolded and asked to identify different dollar bills, but it was impossible for me to tell the difference between the one and five-dollar bills. I also had the opportunity to read Braille. It was difficult. I learned that people who are blind develop their other senses even stronger to help them see pictures in their minds. Students also had the chance to experience various forms of auditory disabilities. We learned sign language, listened to a recording that simulated having a cochlear implant, and put cotton balls in our ears while trying to follow directions and have a conversation. Some stations at the event focused on learning disabilities. If you'd like, please try one of the activities we did to help us understand what it may be like to have difficulties focusing and becoming overwhelmed by multiple directions. Please wait until I have finished giving all of the directions before you begin. Please touch your nose, raise your hands and wiggle them, say your ABCs, pat your head twice, whistle, clap your hands five times, stomp your feet three times, and say your name. Was that too much at one time for you? I thought so, too. Other activities that simulated physical disabilities, such as using a wheelchair, mouth writing, and bean pickup with socks on our hands, that was difficult because it simulated not having strong, fine motor skills. The bean pickup station helped me realize how hard it would be to do everyday things with a physical disability. Another station gave students an insight into autism. We watched a video clip from the perspective of a person without autism walking down the road, then watched a clip of the same walk from the perspective of a person with autism. The second clip was much louder and brighter. The person was distracted by many details along the walk that the first person did not notice. It was very interesting to see the differences.
After participating in the stations, our classes discussed our different experiences. Then our teachers talked with us about students with disabilities being in every classroom in our school and throughout our community. We also learned about students in Mrs. O'Brien's class with multiple disabilities. Our conversations made us more sensitive to people with disabilities and also inspired a new friendship.
Fourth grade shares a hall with Mrs. O'Brien's students. Now that we have a better understanding of disabilities, fourth-grade students volunteer in her classroom with our new friends. I especially have enjoyed this opportunity. We get to practice basketball, we get to play basketball, practice jousting, go for walks, and participate with other collectivities. It is a lot of fun. The disability awareness event helped all of us gators be able to put habit number five of the seven habits of happy kids into practice in a new way. The habit is seek first to understand, then to be understood. Hopefully, we have been able to share some of our insight with you all and have inspired you to seek first to understand people with disabilities, too.
If you have any questions for us, we're happy to answer, but they seem to really enjoy the activity and have been wonderful volunteers, and it's really improved the environment and the climate at our school.
Questions or comments from the board?
Just a comment. Thank you all for coming before us and sharing your experience. You did a fantastic job, not only in the work you did, but in your presentation of it. Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have our public participation discussion session. There's one person who signed up, and it's Mary Skinner-Jones. If you'll come to the podium, if you restate your name for us for the record, and you are aware that you'll have three minutes to share with us, any comments that you have at this time.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Mary Skinner-Jones, and I'm the director of the Renaissance Foundation. I'm not sure if a lot of you are familiar with it, but if you saw the masterpiece downtown, the old historic Bethel with the art of the murals around it, that's our project. I come before you this afternoon, first of all, one of the things I would like to say is I was so impressed with all the young people. I'm a grandmother, but it was just so good to see. There is a book, a children's book, that was written by Miss Kimberly Johnson. The name of the book is No Fear for Freedom. It is a book about the Friendship Nine. In January, you probably saw on TV when the Friendship Nine records were cleared. Judge Ernest A. Finney was their attorney 54 years ago, and they asked him to come back and represent them again. We're bringing the play No Fear for Freedom to Columbia. The reason I went to Rock Hill, South Carolina, as a result of this children's book, the children began to ask the question, whatever happened to the Friendship Nine? Kimberly got busy trying to get their records cleared, and that's how it came about when the kids began to ask that question. At that play in Rock Hill, the musical, there were several people from Columbia that traveled to Rock Hill to see that play, and I asked if it were possible to bring it to Columbia. On May 7, we're having it at the Township Auditorium. The tickets are $20 for adults and $10 for children. This is a time when the community of Rock Hill, it was a local acting group that came together to present this musical. It's something that I feel that all children should see and all children would enjoy, as well as adults, because the adults brought their children. The cast is diverse, and also the children that are in the play are very, very, very good. I was so surprised how community came together for healing. I want to pass this book around, because she has a workbook with it, too, and it's my understanding that she was here on... And it's my understanding that she was here on Friday talking to, I think, the history teachers, so they're familiar with it. So I would love to partner and have the students from Richland, too, to come out to this play. And the tickets will be on sale starting on Friday at the Township.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
Any questions?
From the board? Thank you very much, Ms. Skinner.
Thank you. And I would like to pass the book around just for them to see it.
Certainly. Certainly. Thank you so much. No one else has signed up for public participation. However, if anyone here who would like to come and address the board, you can do so at this time. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the voting on the executive session items. The chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion on student number one to uphold the appeal, and I recommend the student be sent to Blythewood Academy and the IAT team. Student number two uphold the appeal, and the student will be sent to Blythewood Academy. Number three uphold the appeal, and the student will be sent to Blythewood Academy. Number four uphold the appeal, and student will go back to their home school on strict Number five uphold the appeal, and the student will return to his home school. Should be, yes, yes, should be. And number six. Uphold the appeal and return the student to home school on strict probation. Number seven has been deferred. And number eight uphold the appeal and send the student to Anna Boyd.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Brill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Johnson. Any further discussion? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, under New Business, No Action Requested, the results of the Richland Two 2015-2016 General Fund Budget Survey. Dr. Hamm?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As we've gone into the beginnings of the process of developing a budget, we have been trying to collect information from a variety of audiences. One of the ways we've done that is through a general fund budget survey. Dr. Miley is here to present that information. I guess Jeff Potts is here to present that information.
We're both, thank you, we're both going to present the results. I think Jeff will start off with the survey. One of the things I'm sure he'll mention is that we were really encouraged, I think we had a 50% increase in the response rate from last couple of years, so we were encouraged that we had that much participation in the survey.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, over the last five years, we've been asking our staff members in Richland Two to participate in the budget process through a staff survey. In prior years, the survey context was really open-ended, and so we had an opportunity for everybody to give feedback and input. At the same time, that was a little cumbersome. So this year, we kind of modified the format, keeping the open-ended responses that we had in the past, but adding in some additional responses where people could give specific feedback to 16 items. These items were formed on the survey based upon prior feedback from the last four years, based upon priorities that you, the district, and schools had. Of course, this isn't, we couldn't include everything within the survey, but we did include about as much as we think we could handle for the process. Let's see, last year, or this year, we had about 1,250 staff members respond to the survey. As Dr. Miley said, this is about 50% higher than what we've had the last couple of years. That includes over 650 teachers, over 500 staff members, and over 100 administrators. Based on the staff responses over the last couple, over this year, there were three areas of focus that really stood out, and these three areas included employee compensation, student-teacher ratios, and academic intervention for lower achieving students. Each one of these areas had come up over the last couple of years as important areas within the survey. Each one of these areas, over 60% of the staff had responded that these were needs areas. That's almost double the proportion of what we had in the other 16 areas. In addition to these three areas, there were open-ended responses that the staff could respond to, and there were over 450 open-ended responses that were given as feedback. And it looks like one of the items that we should have included as an additional item to those 16 would have been media centers. We had over 100 responses from staff members to the needs of the media center. This is some of the general information that we had from the budget survey. We've given you some feedback regarding the survey responses, and we'll turn it over to Dr. Miley if you don't have any other, if you don't have any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. We, also, if you remember, we had a, we reached out to the public and asked them to reply, to respond to us through our email address. We broadcast that at our Business Advisory Council, Parent Advisory Council, Faculty Advisory Council, at every public meeting we could. We put out notices in, from the media to encourage people to get feedback from us. We got, as of the time we needed to support, submit the board package, we had gotten 10 emails. Of those, eight were Richland Two employees, and six of these, it's kind of a recurring theme, six of these were regarding increasing funding for media centers. One was from the Parent Advisory Council, and one was from the Dent Middle Community. Of the topics that they recommended or mentioned were media centers. One individual mentioned the crosswalk at Dent. One mentioned the auditorium facilities at Blythewood High School, and then one mentioned the front desk security issues at Lake Carolina Upper. We have all these, we'll be compiling these and giving you all full comments in writing. And by the way, I know the PowerPoint that we have here, you do have a full report in your packet. Since last Tuesday, we've gotten five more responses. Four of them were from, they were all from employees. All five additional comments were from employees. One was a lengthy two-page letter that identified issues related to the nine priority areas. I've given you all hard copies of that for your review. Most of that was about bus discipline, bus drivers, and common sense with some discipline issues. Of the others, they were, two of them recommended PE coordinators, one addressed nurses' pay, and the last one was about restrooms at Summit Parkway Middle School. We will combine all those in addition to the comments tonight and the next night in terms of written comments and to the, to the board, to our survey. Do we have any questions?
Any questions, comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. If we can just refer back to slide number two, if you guys can go back to slide number two for me.
That one right there?
Yes. Now, if you could really explain that to me, when I'm looking at classroom teacher, 658 with 52%, and then we just come down to administrator, 103 with 8.2%, is there any type of way you could have told us how many classroom teachers we have, how many responded? Because that's just not a clear picture for me to quite understand what's going on.
The percentages I gave were percentages overall. I can give you percentages of each individual category if that would help you.
I think that would be helpful, because when I look at classroom teacher, how many classroom teachers do we have? I see 658 and only 52.3%, and then when you come down, especially with that administrator, 8.2%, what exactly does that mean? I think on the board, we'd like to have you guys explain that as well as the public.
We can do that. Off the top of my head, that's about a third of our classroom teachers. But in terms of remembering how many classroom teachers we have distributed, but we can get the exact numbers for you.
If you guys can come back with that, because I know we have a faculty of 3,500 employees, and when I think about 3,500 employees, and I see 1274 with 100%, that can be quite confusing.
Correct.
If you can clarify for me, I greatly appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Caution Parker.
I just want to ask something about the media centers and the funding. I know at one time, we used to have a line item for every school budget for media centers. Then years ago, before your time, Dr. Miley, years ago, we put it into the full budget of the school left up to the discretion of the principal. So are all of our employees aware of when they're, when they're talking about the media centers, that there is funding? The funding is there because it makes it seem like we have absolutely no funding for media centers, and we do.
I think some of them are aware of that. I think that some of them, of course, when it's at the discretion of the site, depending on the discretion of that principal and site, how much they allocate to media centers. But we have been, we met with, they, the media centers have gathered a great deal of information. This request has come back up to us again this year. We hope we can address it in the overall budget. We tried to last year, but we didn't. But we think it certainly has become a very hot topic among all the schools right now.
I just think that we need to have some clarification, because there's a lot of misinformation out there. Schools do have funding.
That's right. Some have more funding than others, and that, I think most of them understand that.
Mr. Chair.
Miss Manning.
Thank you. I know, Dr. Parker, I know that Susan and I both attended a couple, and a couple of our media centers and talked, and some of them are saying that they don't have the funding they used to for things like furniture and books, and that even though we're, you know, going with modern libraries, they still have some needs. So it seems like even though that money was transferred to the principal, it may not filter down to them, as Dr. Miley said, at all the schools, the way that it used to when it was a line item where they had full discretion over those funds.
Correct. And some of the things we've learned is that some of the electronic media, now, we bought it one time, a while back, you bought it once and you had it. Now it's more like a license fee and recurring fees and recurring expenses. So we hope to be able to address that, and it will be addressed, it will be presented to you.
Didn't we, though, increase the budget line item specifically last year, though, for media centers? Or am I just thinking about 8% at one school?
It was, it was, it was in the request last year, but it didn't get funded.
Okay.
So you saw it last year as a line item request.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions or comments from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miley. Next on our agenda is a report on the Project Care Coalition. Dr. Hamm?
Yeah, we were fortunate enough to get this grant and to present the information about the Project Care Coalition. Our, Jevana Lovett, the project director, and Shirley Vickery.
Chairman Jackson, board members, Dr. Hamm, executive staff, and members of the public, good evening. I am Jevana Lovett. I am the project director for the Project Care Coalition. In October of 2014, Richland School District Two received a drug-free communities grant from the United States Department of Health and Human Services. This grant is focused on reducing substance use in the Richland Two community. As you can see, we are currently in year six. We have devoted the last three and a half months to primarily marketing the coalition and recruiting members. We are heavily focused on community support. We want to empower our families, our schools, and our youth. Our initial goal is to focus on reducing youth substance use, and then to focus on adults. We have 12 sectors that make up the coalition, and we have committees that are involved in basically getting awareness out about the coalition, increasing community involvement, providing information, as well as being there and engaging our youth and our parents and our families. We are really excited to be participating in a statewide Out of Their Hands campaign. When we return from spring break, we will be initiating our prom and graduation activities. The Out of Their Hands campaign is designed to inform adults that it is illegal to purchase as well as to provide alcohol to our youth. So we're partnering with our local Bylaw's, Blue Lion, and Kroger stores in the Richland Two community to go out to do an activity called Project Sticker Shock. So with high school students, coalition members, parents, volunteers, as well as law enforcement officers with the alcohol enforcement team, on April 24th, we will go out to these stores and we will place labels on beer cases as well as on wine bottles. And the message is clear that it is illegal to provide alcohol to minors. We took the opportunity to look at the top nine priority areas for improvement that the district has, and we looked at some of the initiatives that the Project Care Coalition has. And we are proud to say that we are able to identify with five of those nine top priority areas and some of the initiatives that the coalition is focusing on. And as you can see, those top five are listed there on the screen. I know I was brief. I know that was a lot of information, all at just one time, but on behalf of the Project Care Coalition, we thank you all for inviting us here this evening so that you can hear this information. We thank you for your support, and we thank you just for your interest. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Lovett. Mrs. Brill?
I'm assuming you've connected with the different high schools and the principals? Are you working with, who are you working with at the individual schools?
We are actually working with middle and high schools. We are gearing up now to send out letters to our principals at the high schools to make contact with liaisons to help us get the prom and graduation initiatives out. Later on in the fall, we will conduct a student perception survey with all of our middle and high school students. We will use that data and work with some of the existing youth clubs in our middle and high schools.
Well, you know, with prom season approaching, this would be a really good opportunity to remind the students, you know, that underage drinking is not allowed, and carrying alcohol in your cars, and that sort of thing.
Right. We also have prom pocket cards that will be distributed to the high school seniors and juniors. This information can be distributed along with their tickets. It has information on there about it being illegal to drink under the age of 21. It also provides information on the cost for tuxedo rentals, prom gowns, flowers, and things like that. So it's just a neat little two-sided card that provides them with information as well as information on the law.
Miss Manning?
I see up there you have student discipline or referrals related to ATOD.
Alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, yes.
Right. Can you tell me how y'all exactly interact with our discipline referrals?
Well, this is a new initiative that will be brought forward as student referrals are brought to the disciplinary committee. We are looking at providing some additional alcohol, ATOD education to some of these students that are being referred. So it hasn't quite been clear in the process of how that's going to be done yet, but we do know that the coalition can help as a resource.
And we can use all the help we can get in that, too, by the way.
Absolutely.
Other questions, comments on the board? Thank you, Ms. Lovett.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a report on the Principal for the Day. This is a recommendation or suggestion that came from Dr. Johnson last year. I'm glad to see that it actually happened. Dr. Hamm?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You heard comments about our Principal of the Day at the budget here that we had earlier today. It was a successful event, and Dr. Baron Davis is here to give you an overview.
Good evening, Chairman Jackson.
Good evening.
Members of the board, Dr. Hamm. As Dr. Hamm stated, I'm here to give you a brief update on our Principal for the Day initiative. And as you can see, we held Principal for the Day on two separate occasions this year. On May 9th, we had our middle and high school participant service principal for the day, as well as on May, March, I'm sorry, March 10th, we had our elementary participant serve as principal for the day. Just some brief statistics for you. We had 24 total participants. They were spread out over four high schools, six middle schools, and 10 elementary schools within our district. And that's just a copy of the And that's just a copy of the card that we use to solicit individuals to participate. And we use a multitude of mediums to try to get individuals interested in participating in Principal for the Day, whether it was at the superintendent's business advisory council meetings, rotaries, Rotary Club meetings, SICs, and various different forms of soliciting participants. The purpose for Principal for the Day, the main purpose is simply to strengthen partnerships between the community, with our community stakeholders. And we wanted to give the participants a firsthand experience of what it actually takes to operate a successful school on a day-to-day basis in Richland School District Two. I prepared just some brief survey data for you to share with you, based on some of the information that we sent out to our participants, to get some feedback from them on their experiences as Principal for the Day. Of those that responded back, we had about eighty-eight percent of our respondents spent about six-plus hours at the schools during that day. So they were there pretty much the whole day. Some of the activities that they participated in, a hundred percent of all the respondents shared that they participated in classrooms, observations, which I was very happy to see. Wanted to make sure that everyone had an opportunity to visit classrooms. Ninety percent of them also participated in duties and supervision, which is important to see how much standing and walking around that administrators do on a day-to-day basis. We had about sixty-six percent actually participate in faculty and staff meetings, and roughly fifty-five percent of them participated in a school tour, where the principal had an opportunity to take the participants on a school tour so they can show off their schools. Some of the most rewarding experiences of the day, eighty-eight point nine percent of our participants identified classroom observations and interactions with staff and students as the most rewarding experience that they received or had while serving as Principal for the Day. Principals also said that ninety-four percent of the principals shared that the most rewarding experience was the relationships, the opportunity to build relationships or deepen relationships with our stakeholders, as well as an opportunity to showcase their schools. We felt that that was also an important part of it as well. We asked a question on a scale from one to five, with one being poor and five being excellent. Do you believe that the PFAD served as a tool for strengthening schools and community relations? And a hundred percent of the participants said yes. They felt that it was an excellent opportunity to strengthen relations. When asked their overall experience, a hundred percent of the PFADs, which are our principal for the days, rated the experience a five. So we had some great feedback from those that shared with us. Some of the more challenging things that they felt, our PFADs shared that keeping up with the daily activities of the principal was one of the most challenging things that they had. And also, we surveyed our principals, and one of the things that they said that was very challenging was dealing with confidential matters, having to juggle dealing with confidential matters, why having a principal for the day assigned to them. So some of the recommendations moving forward for Principal for the Day for two thousand sixteen, we're going to have an opportunity for debriefing, or make sure that we schedule events ahead of time and send out a schedule of what those events are going to be doing, what those events will be at the school. And we will free up the principals, do our best to free up the principals so they do not have to handle confidential situations unless it is absolutely necessary or an emergency, so they can devote as much time as they can to spending with the principal for the day that's assigned to their school. A hundred percent of all the principal for the day participants also agree that it's something that we should continue next year and continue to expand. What we're going to do right now is we're going to have a brief presentation by Evangelina Hemphill. Hemphill and Mr. Jeff Timoney. Ms. Hemphill served as principal for the day at Spring Valley, and of course, Mr. Timoney is the principal at Spring Valley. You guys will step up.
Hello, everyone. My experience as Principal for the Day was absolutely amazing. It was awesome to be there, to interact with Principal Timoney, to learn from him, to share my ideas, to interact with the students, interact with the teachers. We did observations in the class, and I was one of the ones that was there all day, from the car ride-aline in the morning to the last meeting at four P.M. of his day. So, and I enjoyed every minute of it. As a parent of District Two, my children are young, second grade, kindergarten, and pre-K. I picked a high school to see what their future holds, for them as students and for me and my husband as parents. And I am nothing less than amazed and impressed with where District Two is and where they're going to be when my students are actually in high school. So it was a very much needed program. I enjoy participating. I look forward to it continuing and being a part of it. So it was, it was awesome. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. It was a great opportunity. I must say, I think it was a great idea to bring the Principal for a Day to Richland School District Two. Couple of comments I want to share. I read a book a couple of years ago, and it stated that Schools Cannot Do It Alone by Jamie Volmer. And what he talked about was the idea that we're all in this together. And we have community members here in Richland Two, and I think Richland Two does a great job of inviting community members. This is just a great example of that. We all know the benefits of schools and communities working together, from reduced dropout to increased employment, to reduce drug use. You've heard some opportunities for community members to be involved here in Richland Two. And I think this is something that we need to continue to have that dialogue. But Volmer talked about the, what he calls the great conversation. And really, that's what we had, just the opportunity to share ideas, to brainstorm, you know, Ms. Hemphill sort of shares some things that she's doing in her business, and how she wants our students prepared to work for her in her business. And I think that's what we're about, preparing our young people for the future, for success. And it just makes sense that we do it together, and I think the Principal for a Day sort of showcases that, that opportunity for us to bring our business folks inside the school. And not only that, I think she learned more about what was going on in Spring Valley, but I learned about what's going on outside of our walls. So it was a great opportunity. Thank you.
And just some additional feedback. We had Mr. A.J. Bracy, who was at Ridge U High School. He shared that, if we have a quote from him, "Our students are being set up for success in achieving their educational goals. We have excellent teachers, and I can be an advocate for my student." And I love that last part. "I can be an advocate," I'm sorry, "for my school." I love that, love that part of the statement, because that's what we want to create. We want to continue to create more advocates for public school, but definitely we want to create advocates for schools in Richland School District Two. And Ms. Kay Barlow, "Had a delightful morning. It was indeed a privilege to see in action what I've known for years. Richland School District Two is educating their students to be contributing citizens of the future and to successfully meeting the challenges of a global society." Very impactful statement as well. And I had an opportunity, of course, to visit several of our schools, and I had a chance to visit Lani B. Nelson while Ms. Barlow was there. And she was in the middle of a leader-in-me training that was taking place for the classified staff. And being a very active participant, I think she gained a lot from that experience. So I'll pause at this moment and stand ready to answer any questions that the board may have.
Questions or comments from the board?
Mentioned debriefing. When will you all have a debriefing, and what are the after results of that?
Initially, our plan was to have a debriefing during the board, during one of our board, right before one of our board meetings. We did not do a debriefing session. And so for next year, for two thousand sixteen, that will be one of our priorities, to make sure that we have a debriefing opportunity for our principals and for our participants. So the survey at that, at this time, served as a method of us gaining information from those participants.
Awesome. Hats off to you. Awesome.
Other questions or comments on the board? Thank you very much. And thank you again, Dr. Johnson, for that recommendation last year.
I could have just been, I did want to thank Dr. Johnson as well for encouraging us to do this. Thank Dr. Davis for making it a reality, and all of the people from the community who did it, as well as our principals. So thanks, everyone.
Next on our agenda is a report on the Jacob Javits Grant. Dr. Hamm?
One of the challenges we face as a school district is how we take students at any level to the next level, to continuously challenge them to reach ever higher levels. And there is often a lot of emphasis on students at the lower end. There's special funding, there's Read to Succeed, et cetera. But we know that average students, I'm going to put that in quotes, high-achieving students, they all need to be challenged. And we were fortunate to be part of a grant, a Jacob Javits grant, that helps us do that. And there are a couple of other activities that we're undertaking that also relate to this issue of challenging all of our students. And so we have a report on that right now. I'm going to call Nancy Gregory. We've got a team of people to help you understand some of the programming we've put in place, make sure we challenge all students to higher levels.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Hamm. We're excited to share with you tonight three initiatives, actually, for student acceleration. And we know that Richland Two has had a long history of being at the forefront of gifted education with our Alert program. And as Dr. Hamm said, these are just some other exciting initiatives that we have underway. And we do have representatives from all these schools, should you have questions at the end. And I'm going to start with Quest. Ms. Denise Barth from Catalba Trail is here to share the Quest program with us.
Good evening. First of all, Quest was begun in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, Polo Road and North Springs Elementary, and it was a challenge thrown out by Steve Hefner, then superintendent. At the time, he said, "What else can we do?" And so Jane Fancher, who is principal at Polo, and myself, who are both former Alert teachers, said, "Hmm, not going to turn down a challenge." Identification has always been an issue, not only with gifted and talented, but with those who were not identified, that we know were achieving. So we really thought about that. We looked at the children that we had and the way that they were achieving, and we worried about especially standardized test scores and the ones that could be gatekeepers. And that's always a big concern. And so that became kind of the impetus for where we went with that. So when we began to structure it, pulled lots of heads together. And I think about, you know, pulling in academics and pulling in the GT folks and pulling in technology integration, and lots of people just kind of thinking, "In what ways might we?" And so you begin thinking about what we already had in place that was successful with Alert, you know, the critical and creative thinking, the research and interpersonal skills, you know, making sure that we have the rigor, but that we also do the content that was going to make sure that the test scores stayed strong, because again, that matters in today's accountability. And so we looked at each individual school. Polo Road went with ELA and social studies. North Springs went with math-science, and now Catalba Trail has also gone with math-science. In order to make the testing fit, the ELA and the math had to be accelerated so that the testing still fits. But the social studies and the science, because it's grade-specific, you had to kind of horizontally enrich, stay on the same topics, but think about how you were teaching them and take them in broader directions. Really critical, though, is that affective domain, that how those children think, those high-achieving children and those gifted children, and how they get along with one another. And I don't know if any of you know Bright Kids, but getting along can sometimes be a challenge. And then finally, looking at how we were going to structure it in order to still get funding for the district, because in order to do that, you had to have a GT-endorsed teacher. You had to make sure that you kept your class sizes at twenty-five or under. And then making sure that some of the things that had bugged us as Alert teachers were kind of handled, making sure that we had class every day. Instead of a pull-out, nothing was missed. The ELA social studies, or the math-science, depending on which school, replaced what they would have had, but that meant it was also their grade. And so all of those structures were built in. And then finally, the curriculum was developed so that it was thematic, integrated, core-connected, standards checked off, have to have that test-taking ready to go. But four to six units a year, still field studies, still overnights, still guest speakers. And so Quest became one of those ways that we said, "Hmm, how do we open the door for high achievers who might not qualify for Alert?" And the outcome was, we found that children who participated in Quest in grades four and five, those were the only two grades we did it with, many of them were then later identified as GT through the exposure to some of those curriculum measures. Not all, but there was a positive outcome in overall test scores as well. Children who are already qualifying at the top tenth percentile continue to make anticipated gains. So a strong program with a lot of input from lots of folks.
Thank you, Ms. Barth, for sharing your thinking outside of the box. And if you'll notice in your board packet, we also have Quest programs at North Springs and at Polo Road. The next initiative we're going to talk to you about tonight is PEPP. And this was a product of the Innovation Incubator. PEPP actually stands for Passion Plus Effort Develops Potential. Under Dr. Maria Krauzios's leadership, this initiative, as I mentioned, was part of the Innovation Incubator. And it was developed by a team of Alert teachers. And they are with us tonight, and I'm going to ask them to stand. As part of the Innovation Incubator, what they did is they researched and they designed experiences for students with multiple benefits. And then they actually created the professional development for teachers around a growth mindset. We are actually piloting this program right now at Keels Elementary. And I think some of the Keels teachers may be here. If they are, there they are. If you will also stand. And I want to applaud this group for such a wonderful collaboration between Alert and the first-grade team at Keels. They're doing an outstanding job. Again, a great collaboration. And we have some pictures for you so you can see what this looks like. Students use games and activities to sharpen critical thinking skills, develop sequential reasoning, perseverance, and much more. And how is this program actually working? Well, we want you to hear what students have to say. When teachers question students, "What is your goal playing the game?", student answer was, "Not to give up." Teacher asks, "What did you use to solve the game?", student responded, "Thinking it through, then I took my time." Teacher questioned, "Do you think playing the games helped your brain?", the student answer was, "When I'm frustrated, I know my brain grows. And when it is hard, my brain is working." It is the theory of neuroplasticity. Now, these are first graders at Keels. Other student answers are, "Every time you work hard to learn something new, the brain makes new connections. The more connections I make, the smarter I am." This has been a wonderful collaboration, bringing joy to the classroom. Our third and last initiative, it has many names, if you'll see in your board packet. We call it the Purdue Grant, the Javits Grant, and you can see it has a very, very long name. But beginning in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, six elementary schools will implement the Javits Grant through Purdue University. It is a research-based organizational model. How were schools selected? These six schools, Bridge Creek, Rice Creek, Sandlapper, Bethel, Hanbury, Langford, and Keels, were selected partially on their Free and Reduced Lunch status, but you can see the other criteria that we used. And if you notice in the long title of the grant, it talks about looking at traditionally underrepresented GT populations. So these schools were selected for that reason. How does the grant work? We gave you two tables in your packets, and this is Table One. And this is a sample grade-level identification of grouping. And in a typical, let's just say this is a fourth-grade class, you may have five groups, a pretty big range in a classroom. And if you notice, I've highlighted special ed in yellow, and that's for a reason, because that is not a separate group, because special ed students may be in the high-achieving group, the above-average, the average, depending on their disability. So that is a little misleading, and that's why I've highlighted it for you. In Table Two, this would be the sample grade-level placement using school cluster grouping. And if you'll notice, one of the purposes or benefits of this cluster grouping, or the grant, is to narrow the ranges in one classroom. And why? What does the research say? What are the benefits? Well, this is what the research says, that over time, more students will be identified as high achievers, few as lower achievers. And teachers will have more time to actually work with individual students due to a reduced range of achievement levels in one class. So three initiatives, three exciting initiatives, thinking a little bit differently about how we challenge students and best meet their needs in Richland Two. Quest, PEPP, and then the total school grouping through the Javits Grant. And with that, we have school representatives here to answer any questions that you may have. have.
Questions or comments from the board? Nancy, I have a question. Help me understand the selection, because I'm not quite sure I get the bullet that talked about fewer, lower achievers if you're grouping the higher achievers together. How do you come up with getting fewer, lower achievers if the lower achievers are not put in a group with the higher achievers from the start?
Well, I think, you know, in some classes, traditionally, that's what you've done, and Maria Krauzios or any of the schools can also answer that. But these are underrepresented schools, and you may have five GT kids in a grade level. And then if you pepper them, one in each class, they do not have like peers to be able to work together. And in this case, there will be a teacher that is GT-trained. One of the things that I did fail to mention is another benefit of the grant is the folks from Purdue University will be here for two days in May to actually work with the schools on how to group the students based on the research. And they are going to do extensive GT training for all teachers. And that teacher with the GT kids or the highest level of kids will be required to be GT-endorsed, if I remember correctly. And again, all of the teachers will be receiving GT training. Does that answer your question?
Partially. I guess the major part of the question I was asking is, how do we gain ground on the lower achievers? And I'm not sure I heard you explain how the lower achievers increase their performance.
Well, I think by the teacher narrowing the range in the classroom so that the teacher can better target and meet student needs.
But they are focusing on, I don't want to grill you, but it sounds like, but they're going to be focusing on the higher achievers, though.
It won't be on the high, all the teachers will have the same training. It will not be just the focus, because the premise of the grant is, let me go back and look at my notes, but the premise of the grant is that the GT program and training will enhance the entire school. Because teachers will be receiving the training on the nature and the needs, and those are all best practice that will increase achievement of all students.
That's okay for now.
Or do you, Dr. Krauzios, anything?
We hope that premise pans out and becomes a reality. So that's fine, for now.
The principal is saying that...
That's fine for now.
Because it is...
Differentiation. It's differentiation. Why?
I didn't hear what she said.
She said GT training is good for all, and it's the differentiation.
True, of course.
And what did she say, Mr.? And what Ms. Jackson said, there's still high achievers. You may not have the GT students, but you still have the higher achievers. And again, I stress that these are schools that are underrepresented with the GT populations.
Are any of these schools, are they strong magnet schools? And if so, how do magnet kids fit into this?
These schools were chosen because they had few initiatives, and that was the reason they were selected, so that they, for the most part, I think Keels is perhaps exceptional, for the most part, they are not magnet schools.
Any other questions from the board, or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Manning.
I think the timing is interesting. Within the last year, I heard that the U.S. military has conducted a lot of similar grouping studies with their academy students and looked at if they put all the high achievers together, they put all low achievers together, and they kind of mixed it up all throughout. And they found that having the right mix of students increased all students in that classroom. And that depends, sometimes if you had high achievers and low achievers, some of the low achievers might feel that they had to give up, or the high achievers didn't get a chance to move far enough ahead. So they did, there was kind of a psychological component of it, as well as the academic component for how those students felt like they were doing compared against their peers in that same environment. So I think it's interesting that I see that now kind of coming to us as a school district. And obviously, there's a lot of other research around how these groupings work. And obviously, reducing the differentiation, to me, I mean, a teacher cannot cover, I don't think appropriately, all of the different groups in a class. So looking forward to see how this does and the results, and that we do hopefully get gains across the gamut, no matter who the student is, and find what works best in this grouping study, so.
And I think we also listed in the benefits, just something along the lines of what you just said, is students of similar achievement levels challenge each other, high-ability learners have the opportunity to compare themselves to their intellectual peers and form a more accurate perception of their abilities.
And I think vice versa as well. Students who maybe are low achieving may compare themselves to the high achievers and feel like they can't get there if they see some success. And so I think that goes both ways.
And like we said, there is extensive training on the actual grouping and professional development. So any other questions?
Other questions or comments from the board? Yes, Ms. Brill.
So this is a five-year grant?
Yes, ma'am.
And what will you do when the grant's over? Just continue the program?
When the grant is over, we will evaluate the program and see if it's successful. The beauty of it is, most of the money for this grant is in the professional development modules, and the district will be able to retain and continue to use those. Any further questions?
Other questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much, Ms. Gill.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the agenda items for our April 14th meeting, which will be at Polo Road Elementary School. Dr. Hamm?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have a number of items. I don't think any one of them is going to be long, but it sounds like a lengthy list. We'll start with the student focus. We'll have a report on the district priority for middle school success. We'll have feedback on the budget. We'll have a proposal for the general fund budget for 2015-16, an update on the bus fleet, an update on SmartSnacks exempt fund raisers, and finally, report on what we do for Internet safety and digital citizenship in the district.
Are there any requests on the board for any additional items to be added to the April 14th meeting or any additional board meeting? Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is our second public participation session. No one has signed up for this session. However, if there's anyone here who would like to come and address the board, you may feel free to do so at this time.
I gave you the wrong date. It was May 1st.
Okay.
I was very, very nervous.
Sure, sorry.
May 1st, at 7:00.
Thanks for the correction.
Thank you very much. If anyone else would like to address the board at this time? Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the board and superintendent comments. We'll start on my far right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Before we do that, I have a few questions. Do we have anyone here from food service or that department that can address some questions for me from the district office? Okay. If you don't mind going to the mic for me, please, Jack.
If these are too detailed, then we may...
They're not.
Okay, all right. Okay, because you may need to have the opportunity to have the information, not knowing in advance. That's all I was going to say.
Right. Yes. The first question is, how do we determine the cafeteria workers that we're going to place at each school? Is that determined based on the number of students enrolled in each school?
It's primarily based on the number of kids that eat, that actually eat our meals. So if you've got a school that only serves 200 meals a day versus a school that serves 500 meals a day, they have a model on how they do their labor. It's all done through the contractor, but it's driven by participation.
It's driven by participation and number of students?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the other thing is, especially with the elementary school, students who have outstanding debt, are we still providing them with alternative lunch, or are we allowing them to eat the lunch that's being served to the other students?
They get an alternative meal. If they are making an effort to settle the debt, then we keep them on the regular meal. If they're basically ignoring our requests and our communications with them, then we leave them on the alternative meal.
And, Mr. Chair, that's what I'd like for us to discuss, because we know that students, especially in elementary school, do not work and do not have a job. And I would like for us to see how we can handle that situation where students are not eating alternative lunch, so that's something we can discuss later.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Johnson. Isn't there on our future agenda items, a report on St. Exo?
Yes, sir, but that policy is a district, that procedure is a district procedure.
Well, I know that, but I was about to say, it could be combined, the two. I didn't...
Sure.
Yeah, because I think having one discussion and combining it with that, I think would be very appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Any other, that's it, thank you, thank you very much, Jack. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Now, back to the board and superintendent comments. Dr. Carson Parker.
I'd like to just say congratulations on all the awards and recognitions this evening. And Jeff, Jeff, the school is absolutely beautiful. I know you're very proud of it. Thank you so much for hosting the meeting this evening. It's been great. Student focus was very good as well. Overall, it's been a very good and informative meeting, and thank you, Richland Two. Proud to be here.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Ms. Mackey.
It's late, so as always, I say thank you for the people who sacrificed your time to be here and to offer your input and support for the district and the students that we serve. Something stuck out with me with the kids who presented tonight, students, pardon me, seek first to understand, then be understood. I love that. They did a great job. They were awesome. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Mr. Blank?
Thank you, Chair. Again, I echo the comments that have been said about the awards, and thank you to the presenters. You know, one thing that really jumped out to me tonight, an aha moment, was what Mr. Tony had referenced about, you know, it really boils down to the great conversation, whether it be discussions about budget, discipline, diversity, training, whether it be about where we're going to place emphasis and priorities, it really boils down to that moment of getting together. And Ms. Hemphill, I appreciate your testimony as well. And to walk in the shoes of our principals is a big task. Thank you for all those who participated in that event. And I look forward to the conversations we'll continue to have as the months proceed. Thank you.
Dr. Johnson.
Yes, I would just like to wish everyone a safe and happy spring break, and teachers especially, take time for yourself, do not take any work home, and enjoy time with family.
Thank you. Ms. Brill?
I wanted to know if Ms. Skinner is related to Bernice Skinner? She's a lovely lady. I'm talking to you.
She was she in Columbia, Bernice Skinner from Columbia.
Ms. Bernice Skinner, she's recently deceased. You don't know her? Okay. She's another lovely lady, as you are. So thank you for being here. Also, I want to thank Amelia Mackey. That was a wonderful recitation that you gave, your prayer or your poem, and I'd love to have a copy of it. I'm helping raise my grandson Louis, and we need all that. He's now four, so he's more of a challenge.
No problem.
It's not getting any easier. And Jeff Williams, thank you for your hospitality. Everything is beautiful. What a gorgeous space. Love being out here. I'm so proud of all the honorees, from academics to sports, all of our young people. Some of us went to the basketball game, and we cheered for Spring Valley Girls. And before the game started, you know, I asked the athletic director, I said, well, what are our chances? He says, not good. I'm so glad he was wrong. We just did great, and it just shows, if you work hard and work together, you can just about overcome and accomplish anything. So kudos to all those great kids, and then all the other basketball players from all the other high schools and all the other athletes. I know Andrew Plant, know his parents, and he is amazing. He looks like his dad. I don't know if you saw his dad. Amazing folks, and I hope everybody has a happy and safe holiday, and we'll come back ready to work in April. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Mr. Manning?
Mr. Chair, I just want to thank all the staff. I can remember sitting up here as a board and having to often use the word sense of urgency and us portraying that back on staff. And what really struck me is we no longer say that here. You guys are acting with a sense of urgency with everything that you do and really making huge strides in the district. Every meeting, it's amazing to me how far we've come in such a short period of time and how quickly we are moving forward and all the many initiatives that you're working with and working together. And you start to see things loop together and really tie together for the benefit of our students. And so as you go into spring break, I hope you do take some downtime and relax and enjoy the time with your families and come back to the really meaningful and difficult work that we have in the district. But again, thank you all for each of your respective positions. No matter what folks do for the district, it's all important. And I appreciate that sense of urgency that we see all the time everywhere we go. And so thank you, and at least enjoy one week of relaxation. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Dr. Hamm?
Yes, it was, it always makes me so excited to have the award winners here and to be able to recognize them at the board meeting. But we just have this plethora of people doing great things. So I do have several other recognitions that I want to make, and I know we'll be making them again at a meeting. But first of all, Dr. Miley and the finance team are right up there with our United Nations teams. They just received their 28th consecutive year for receiving the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Award, which is just remarkable. There are school districts that are, you know, it's a news announcement that they made their first one. We're 28 years in a row. It's fabulous. Our student councils have just knocked it out of the ballpark at the annual convention. Westwood High School was named the 4A Student Council of the Year. Richland Northeast was named the 3A Student Council of the Year. All five of our high schools were gold honor councils, and one of our high schools had a student inducted in the Terry McCoy Hall of Fame, which is, of course, named from our own Terry McCoy. Kudos to PJ Dozier at Spring Valley High School. He was named the 2014-15 Gatorade South Carolina Boys Basketball Player of the Year, which means that he was named the best boys' basketball player in the state. And it not only recognizes his athletic excellence, but his character and academic achievement. So just a true student athlete in the best sense of the word. Richland Northeast was recognized as first-place participant in the Keep America Beautiful's 2014 Recyclable, and it's based on the tonnage of recycling based on student populations that they collect during a six-week period. So I'm proud of what our schools do for the environment. Westwood High School wrestling coach, Ashley Powell, was named the Region for a Wrestling Coach of the Year. Jason Powell there was named the Region for Athletic Director of the Year. Wonderful success on the part of that faculty. And at Ridgeview High School, band director Vince Clayton was presented the Citation of Excellence from the National Band Association, which is their highest honor. He was named the Band Master of the Year, also by the South Carolina Chapter of Phi Beta Mu, which is International Band Master Fraternity. So our music programs are fabulous, and he is wonderful and well-deserving of that honor. And then last but not least, I want to say congratulations to our school board. It was just recognized at the National School Board's Association's Annual Conference in Nashville for an honorable mention Magna Award, and that was a recognition for the work on R2 Innovates, which of course, we heard about part of the Innovation Incubator results just this evening. So congratulations to the school board.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm. I think tonight was an embodiment of just all of the excellence that exists in our school district. And though our district has changed and it has evolved over the years, it has grown drastically. Nevertheless, every person in this room and many who you represent, teachers and administrators, are still doing it for all the right reasons. And that's what really matters, because it's the students that you come to work for every day and you work hard. And though you were offered a week off to relax, I know that you won't do that. You'll be thinking about your students and planning to come back after Easter, because you're committed to excellence in our district, and you're committed to helping every student achieve his or her very, very best. And so I want to, on behalf of the board, thank you, because it is an honor to represent you and the work that you do, and it makes my job easier as I speak to those in the public who question whether or not public education has lost its emphasis, has lost its strength, has lost its luster. It hasn't, certainly hasn't in Richland District Two. And I am so proud to be a part of this district and the excellent work that you're doing. Please continue that. Have a great vacation break, and we look forward to seeing you back here, actually not here, at Polo Road, on April 14th. not here, at Polo Road on April 14th. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
Mr. Manning has a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Brill? We stand adjourned. Thank you very much.